Discussion?
Mayor, I have a couple of observations.
Sure.
We looked at the fee schedule last evening at the Finance Committee, and this one I just, I slipped right past it, but looking at this, at this item here, I'm wondering what the rationale for charging a fee for, for what's basically a virtual office, where there's no, no visitors, there's no outside contact, it's working from home via computer. Why would we, what benefit does the, the permitee receive for paying that fee? Or what, what service do we provide for charging that fee? And I see none. And the second, the second observation is I'm looking under fire at safety inspections at the discretion of the Community Development Director. Inspection requirements may be waived for home occupant occupations considering of office functions without visitors, physical stocks, or materials, or deliveries. And, and I'd suggest that, that, that that language be stricken, that, that there is no point in inspecting that anymore than there is your house or mine. I can sit on a computer and work from home. Occasionally, I do. And, and certainly, I don't expect to be inspected for that.
Right. Is there a little background on this that you might add to?
So that, that particular section says that all, all businesses requiring registration shall be inspected. And so the idea of allowing us to remove it would do exactly what you're saying. In a case where it's a home office, we would not inspect it. So it was a, we were trying to acknowledge that not every single business wouldn't necessarily need that, need an inspection.
Well, can you envision any circumstance under which someone working virtually, say an architect, or whatever, someone does medical records transcription, working remotely from home, under what circumstances would you ever have need to inspect that?
No, I, I think the idea of the inspection or something like that would be more of like an outside visual, just to confirm that they haven't changed the nature of the business. So they haven't expanded, there's no outward appearance of a business from the street.
Well, okay. Philosophically, I think we definitely, the fee should definitely cover our cost of service without question, and I've, I've been advocate for that for always.
Yeah.
But there should be a service associate, and I don't see one here.
The, the, um, home office, virtual office, we're not changing that. That's been a permitted use all along.
So the, the, the original effort here was to correct the discrepancy in the code. We had, we have registered home offices as a virtual office for about eight, 10 years. The, this section of the code says that they're exempt. So we had to reconcile that in some way. So we sent this to the Building Committee to, to figure out which way should we go? Should we take it out of the fee schedule and stop registering? Or should we leave the registration requirement and amend this section? So that, that was the reason we were doing this.
And the challenge becomes, and I, and I, you know, we all tend to look through our own lenses, a home office could have employees or employee, I think there's a limit of one employee there. So you, you have potential for there to be visitors, depending on the nature of the business, et cetera. So I, it, I think what's, in light of the pandemic and the, the reality that so many people were working from home, I, I think Trustee Jensen's probably envisioning, you know, if we had four or 500 people working from home, are we gonna in any way attempt to register all those people that are working from home? In the sense that they bring their laptop home and work from home instead of going to an office versus having a physical office set up for a business? And I, is there a distinction there?
I, I think, if I can, I'm looking at the definition of a home occupation in the zoning code, and it provides that it's any activity carried out for gain by a resident conducted as an accessory use in the residence dwelling unit.
Right.
Somebody working at home.
A function of business.
Couple of days a week, I would not call that an accessory use to your residence.
Right.
This, to me, talks about an actual business where the, the headquarters is the home, and it's conducted out of the home versus, you know, from time to time, working at home. So I don't think this addresses people working at home, just for convenience.
Well, you see, you see more and more, I mean, Mayor mentioned the pandemic, but that's more and more the new normal. There are many businesses that, that have closed down their, their central office and their, their staff works primarily or exclusively. And so that, that's not, that's not, it's more of the, the new normal.
For clarification, Andrew, are you, and that's why I was kind of going back to the, the definition, and I'm glad Jim brought it up. Are, the virtual office, in, in your interpretation, would that include what Trustee Jensen is bringing forward? The, the working from home person? Or would it be, again, as Jim brought forward, a, a business operation, business headquarters, contractor who has, you know, answers his phone at his home and, but, you know, doesn't have employees there or anything else, whatever?
It is, it's the latter, and we have about 10 of them right now who do register for that purpose. They run a business where they are able to handle invoicing, scheduling, et cetera. They do that from their house, they are more headquartered from the house.
Right.
The materials don't enter the house, they're elsewhere, but they handle the logistics, invoicing, quotes and whatnot.
Transacting business.
From the house.
Yeah.
But I would think that, just in the, the text of the summary, a more intensive use would be triggered by deliveries, visitors, or physical stocking of materials. At that point, they probably should be an inspected business because there is deliveries and stocking. You know, you could have the garage full of mini babies or whatever, and you're having trucks come and go. I, I just said that because that's Mark's business that he runs.
Mini baby collector.
Yeah. And that's how it's defined in the fee schedule, by the way. In the fee schedule, language is Class 1 Home Business, parenthesis, Office Functions Only, No Stock, No Visitors.
And what's our proposed fee?
I'm sorry, sir?
What's the proposed fee for?
Twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five, yeah.
It's negligible.
So it's a, it's a registration, it's a booking function for?
And, and it's negligible, it's just, again, the philosophy of.
Yeah.
Fee for service. If there's no service, there should be no fee.
Yeah. And the, in this case, I think we would look at the service as the cost of maintaining the registration. I know, there's a, but there is a cost.
That's why it's your Foid card.
Yeah, yeah.
What do you get for that?
Right. Permission slip. So, yeah, okay. I, I, so it sounds like we're primarily heading in the right direction from my perspective. I, whether the fee is or isn't, the inspection may be waived for home occupations consisting of office functions. So the only challenge would be, to Trustee Jensen's point, should it say maybe, or should it say shall be? But then, yeah, I don't know. And the discretion is the, the nature of the business and whether or not a business today may or may not have visitors and may start having visitors later and.
Well, and, and then that, of course, would push you out of this class.
Right.
And, and that would then, the waiver would be, if, if you waive it for that class.
Right.
And the, the activity, they suddenly start having, you know, dog grooming onsite or childcare, or you name it, then, then they don't qualify for this.
But what if it's just something as simple as a neighbor complaining because he thinks they're running a business and it, and it generates a couple of visits by staff?
That's, yeah. You'd, you'd have to, just like complain about a drug deal going on next door, you'd have to, you'd have to verify it.
Right.
Right. So I think that might solve it, just to say maybe rather than shall be, right?
Well, it does say, it does say maybe, right?
Oh, it does?
So one further extension of this is in this day of e-commerce, a person could be running a legitimate business, a sole, a sole proprietor, out of their home, transacting commerce, sales tax, what have you, without actually taking deliveries and shipping things out. You know, it's a, it's a electronic transaction that nobody actually touches anything. And that could easily fit into the realm of what you're talking about, but then for our purposes, we would want to know that business existed, and we would want to know that we should be receiving revenue and the like in the form of sales taxes, et cetera. So I can see a lot of different dimensions here that might go beyond, you know, the tax accountant that's doing everything electronically.
Day trading, well, I've got, I had a neighbor that used to do that. Bitcoin mining, now.
What was the address we need to inspect?
Yeah. Well, I don't know that I've heard anything that we should change, other than the discussion of the discretion of the Community Development Director. I guess.
Well, Mayor, I'd recommend that that language in five decimal zero two decimal zero nine zero, highlighted, that bold at the bottom, would just simply state that inspection requirement is, is waived for home occupations consisting of, et cetera, et cetera. And just strike the at the discretion of the Community Development Director. Period. That'd be my recommendation.
Andrew, do you see any dimensions there we should consider?
I suppose if we had, if we had a code enforcement type action where somebody, we're, we're responding to a complaint because somebody is outside of the bounds of what a home occupation, office only would be, if we're seeing visitors, as long as the, the consensus is that we would have the, the ability to inspect in the event that they were outside of the office only.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't have any issue with that.
So basically, what I'm hearing from Trustee Jensen would be striking the words at the discretion of the Community Develop Director, Development Director, and then capitalize the T in the, the inspection requirement shall be waived for home occupations consisting of, yeah.
Right, that's, that's my suggestion.
If there's no objections, who, that was Larry's motion and Linda's second?
I think Regina did that one.
I think that was your second.
Yeah, it was her second, yeah.
Would the original motion maker amend the motion?
Absolutely.
And will the second or second, the amendment? All right, we're back on track. Any other discussion?
I just want to make sure, Andrew, you're comfortable with this change?
As long as I have the ability to, to complete an investigation for somebody that is suspected to be running a business.
Yep.
That's not in compliance with the, the intent of the office only, that, I think this gives me that ability.
I would hope that falls within the parameters of your job description generally, anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's, that's preserved with this.
Okay.
Okay. Very good. Roll call, please.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Sittick.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Who's not reporting?
Thank you, you shook, took a long time on that. Speaking of taking a long time, Trustee Miller, Public Relations, their government.
Oh, really? No report? I'm sorry. Move it along.
Trustee Sittick, Public Safety.
I have nothing to babble about.
You babbled out. Then we'll go on to the king of babbling.
Always something to babble about over here.
Public Works Committee, Trustee Addison.
Let's spend some money, shall we?
Shall we?
Yeah, with all the things being said tonight, mentioned earlier by Don about how we, with our balanced budget as a result of our talented staff, we still do have money to spend on a somewhat aggressive street repair program for a town of our size. So with that being said, I would like to make a motion to pass a resolution awarding the contract to Payne and Dolan of Antioch, Illinois, in the amount of $1,267,173.95 for the 2022 Motor Fuel Tax Street Maintenance Program.
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Addison, second by Trustee Miller. Discussion?
All-time high, huh?
Yep.
One point two.
I just had a quick question. Obviously, this went out to bid.
Yeah.
There were three bidders, they were the lowest.
Yep. Yep.
And we've been happy with Payne and Dolan's service in years past. No, no objections by the staff or the village engineer.
Okay. This, the, the thing that I said was gonna happen someday is actually happening. We're, we're paving in the Heatherstone subdivision, that brand-new subdivision of, what, almost 20 years ago?
Yeah, right.
Right.
It just happened yet last week. So it's, it's good that we're, again, on track and keeping up with maintenance needs, even in the, in the subdivision there, so. All right, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Sittick.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye. Carries.
All right, thank you. And, and the other thing that someone stole my thunder for this part of my babbling tonight is in reference to our purchasing of a, a replacement pump for one of our lift stations. Like we said, they're, they're not brand-new anymore, and, and they, we've been, you know, having regular maintenance on them, but it is a reality that we do need to start replacing some of these things. And after the discussion, we had the one that came out and was deemed to be maybe beyond repair. I believe we've gotten a second opinion, and we think that, at last I heard, we were waiting on a response unless there's an update. We're hoping to be able to rebuild that one and have it as a spare for this pump. But we've got several different sizes of pumps, depending on the, the lift station. So there is a need to purchase this new one and hopefully rebuild the other one as a spare. If not, we'll have to plan for spares. I think they said this one, this size is good in two of our lift stations. So maybe to have spares, we can maybe get away with just having two-size pumps on the shelf, and they would work in multiple places. So it, it's a good idea. So I will make a motion that we authorize accepting the proposal from the Public Works Department at Lake County, who has been doing our service work on the lift stations, to purchase and install a new pump at the swing parcel lift station in an amount not to exceed $14,295.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Addison, second by Trustee Miller. Discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Sittick.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you, that concludes my babbling.
All right. I have nothing to babble about from the Tiff Committee, because we have not had a meeting. The staff want to babble about anything?
I think I'll void the babbling. I don't know if anybody else wants to babble? No, thank you, Mayor.
All right. We have no old business to babble about, we have no new business?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
We are, some of us are meeting virtually with Senator Bush next week to discuss the Sheridan Road speed issue, and hope to enlist her support and county board members and sheriff and whoever else is gonna join us to, to lean on Department of Transportation to reduce the speed limit on Sheridan Road. So fingers crossed, we'll, we'll hope that we can, we can get enough pressure on them to match the speed limits north and south of us.
Yeah. And I will add that Administrator and I met with Representative from the Sheriff's Office to discuss that exact topic, and the sheriff is on board.
It's a election year, of course it is.
Yeah, and they're preparing additional documentation and, and statistics to help in the discussion, so.
And whenever I get a chance, I stop and, and thank our police officers for, for the work they're doing. I look into CAD reports and I've seen that they're, they've increased the, the effort on Sheridan Road.
Yes.
Just earlier this week, we had another really bad accident with a motorcycle versus car on Sheridan Road.
Yep.
And that's the area that we're looking at lowering the speed limit. I, I know that doesn't make everyone slow down, but it makes some of the honest people slow down, and that, that, that could help, can't hurt.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah. If, if, if the motorcycle were going a little slower, maybe when that guy turned in front of him, there wasn't a T-bone.
Maybe, yeah.
Yep.
Don, could you share that meeting invite again? I know it's a virtual.
I didn't hear that one.
Could you share that meeting invite again? I was on the original list, but I.
Do you have that, Mark? Can you share that out to?
I don't have it on my calendar, I was gonna try and dial in during work.
I never saw it. Nope, I didn't either.
Can you share with the, with the electorate?
The only thing I would.
Yeah, we get the publisher meeting if there's.
Yeah, the, the attorney may have comment about the open act if we're gonna, if we're gonna have a mass attendance by trustees.
Any more than two.
Yep.
Where you talk village business, would be a village meeting.
What if I promised just to keep myself muted and just listen?
That's impossible.
It's impossible.
I'm gonna take notes of that.
What, are, would we, if we're, if we're lobbying the state reps to lean on, on the Department of Transportation, is that, is that village business?
It is.
It's not, it has nothing to do with.
Well, village business, it's, it's pretty broadly defined.
Right.
Where you're talking about items that you could consider as part of your, your role and your duties, where you're deliberating about, I guess, items that assist the Village of Beach Park. The Attorney General's taken a broad approach.
Oh, I can appreciate that. Yeah, I, I understand, I mean, it's kind of a gray area, are we deliberating, are we lobbying, what are we doing?
Well, can we advertise that meeting 48 hours ahead and allow us?
Well, that's what we were gonna, we were saying, is, this was, is a virtual meeting.
Right.
We would need to allow public access, public comment, and, and I'm not sure that that's what the expectation is from.
Right.
The politicians that we're trying to influence, if I could say it that way. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but.
Well, I'm fine with having Don be our spokesmodel for that, if I can't dial in, that's.
Or their administrator.
Yeah, and I will be in attendance with the Administrator, and Trustee Jensen is the.
We'll, we'll hold our feet to the fire.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Maybe we can watch the recording afterwards.
If, if it doesn't go well, we'll have the biggest public meeting we can get, and.
Well, I tried with the, with the new son, and we got a little bit of interest, I think.
Yep.
Is, is Red Mayfield gonna be?
No, I don't believe so.
I know, I know Waukegan's interested.
I don't think so, though.
Yeah, we're, we're talking with law enforcement about strategies involving their neighbors and other agencies to ramp up and/or amplify anything that we can do for enforcement, but also, it would be great to be able to do that in concert with reduction in speed. So, you know, whether the speed reduction happens, we still have other strategy.
Sure, well, part of that, part of the area where the speed is still 40 is, is outside of our jurisdiction, is south of our jurisdiction, that's why Rita was, was, at least at the press.
Well, she currently represents everything south of York House, in, in Beach Park.
There you go.
So, as Joyce Mason from there north.
Well, maybe we could do like the truckers do and just have block, you know, go real slow and, you know, have, just have all the workers drive driving back and forth.
Yep, public works, we'll just, we'll run blocking maneuvers, yeah.
Well, I did, I know we put out our speed limit sign for a time.
Yeah.
It's still there.
Yeah.
And Waukegan had one too.
The initial report from that was that 40% of the people were exceeding the speed limit, and a couple of them were in the 90s.
Yep.
So, I mean, I think with that kind of data, I know Waukegan had theirs out too, I would hope that their data will be available as well, along with our history of accidents and.
They're both still out.
Right, so that data, I would think, would be pretty telling.
And, and that is one of the, the strategies we're.
I skew that low, though, because I tried the speed limit through there.
Yeah, somebody has to. Okay. Any other new business? All right, now would be the second opportunity for citizens wishing to address the board. Any and all takers on any and all topics, all we ask is you come to the podium and give us your name and state your case. Please.
My name is Stoner Fortson, I live at 39032 North Evergreen Avenue in Rock and Beach Park. My reasons to be in here is that in last year, Labor Day, there's a creek that I understand is running west and east, and this water, this creek, was directed, direct into my house through the tile, drainage tile, and it's running through my house and has been running through my house since Labor Day. I feel this is wrong, I don't think it's legal, but I know it's wrong. And also, my, I am always followed everywhere I go, and the reason my, for being followed is that underground electricity is being put in my yard, in fact, all around the house, and into the house. The pumps, if there's a pump outside that doesn't work, someone, I am told, it's the people behind me, comes into my house, take my pumps out of my house and put them in the outside with me. I was, my well was taken away from me. I was told that the mayor said, if I want a well, I can put one in or I can hook up. Okay, why didn't you tell, this require this of the person who needed a well? Why didn't you make them hook up, or make them put their own well in? They are the ones that needed the well. I didn't need it, I had my own private well. And it was taken away from me. That is illegal to take and to share someone's pump, I mean, well, with someone else, because what they do can affect me, my health and otherwise. Also, that the cars that, the car that follows me is usually a black SUV, sometimes it's a tan, old-model car, and a white Chevrolet old-model car. And my, I have a garage, I can't even park in my garage, because when I park in my garage, someone goes into the garage and tamper with my car, so I park in front of my door. I have surveillance cameras, but it doesn't do any good, because these people take the, turn the, the cameras off. And I know one problem, the reviewers, this problem is to them, they say that they have someone within the police department, so when I call them, the police, they say that's why the police doesn't help. The people to the west of me, the man that owned that property, says that I would be wasting my breath coming to Beach Park to complain about him, which may be right, I don't know. But in recently, the water, this water running all, everywhere, and the force of this water on the west side of my house, on the north side of my house, recently split the concrete step and, concrete porch into half. So I have to have that repaired. I have to have someone to divert the water that's coming into my basement. All of these things are actually, I don't think any of them are legal, but I do know that, and I believe deeply that they are ordered by the mayor, because of, I have been told by a critical, critical person. And I don't, it's, it's hard to believe that a person is so heartless that they would do this to me, but it's happening. And my car, anywhere, anything, even the garage door was torn down. And the justification from the mayor of anything that happens to my house is just old. Their house is a hundred years old, and they are older than my house. Yet and still, you do things and order things to be done to my property. And I'd just like to know why, why my property, why me? I like to think race would be the last thing to think of, but I believe it should be the first thing.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Forbes, for coming in. I think we did speak once about 10 years ago. You mentioned a problem with your well then. There's been no orders issued by me or anyone else regarding you or your property to. There's been no orders issued by me or anyone else regarding you or your property to change anything with your water or your well. There's no city water available to you out there, so you have to be on a private well. That's not an option, that's just what you have to have. If you're on a joint well with other neighbors, that's not uncommon in Beach Park. If that's the situation, you may have more than one neighbor using the same water. I don't know if that's your case or not, but a well contractor should be able to tell you that. As far as items where people are following you, or people are damaging your house, or your garage, or your vehicles, I have no information about that. Certainly, nobody here has ever said to do anything to you. Like I said, the only reason I know you is we spoke 10 years ago, probably shortly after I became mayor, and our property records, I don't believe we have any active enforcement, code enforcement issues or anything. My code enforcement director is shaking his head no. So I'm afraid you're under misinformation as far as, you know, somebody telling you that I'm ordering something, it's simply not happening, it's simply not true. And I, other than you telling me your address here, I couldn't have, couldn't have known even where you live, other than the fact that we spoke once before, so. Appreciate you coming. I would encourage you to speak further. If you've got water issues that are a result of surface water draining over your property, that is something that may be regulated by the Village of Beach Park or by stormwater management, but that would be information that staff would have to look into for you. I don't believe you've made any inquiries yet on that, and not that I'm aware of. So I guess I appreciate you coming in and talking to us. Would encourage you to speak with our staff to get further questions. We're not really here in a way to be able to answer questions tonight for you, other than to dispute that the mayor has been ordering anything to happen to you, so it has not been the case.
So, I have been coming up here just about every two or three months since before and after you had taken, after the mayor took office.
Mm-hmm.
The last time I was here was last summer, and I was told the best advice could be given to me would be to call and not come. We, Beach Park has always had open policy. I've been here for 40 some years.
Mm-hmm.
And I have been here, everybody just about knows how much I have complained, because I have been here, especially this man, I think his name is Wells. And this, someone from the department came to my house not too long ago because of this water. The health department is the one that told me that the creek was running through my house. I didn't know what, where the water was coming.
So you've actually got a ravine that comes across your yard to your house?
It comes across my yard, it comes down.
Underground.
The underground.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Again, I understand, and we're not going to solve anything here tonight, but I encourage you to continue to speak with staff on specific issues. You'd have to talk to the police if somebody's following you. I don't know anything about electricity in the ground, you know, or anything like that, but again, I thank you for coming tonight, and we'll just have to move on at this point. We have no cause tonight for an executive session.
Mayor?
Yes.
It's my pleasure to offer a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you, thanks, John.
Thank you.